Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven o'clock. Some of us are here in the Lee Middle and High School Library, and some of us are coming through Zoom. We are in a virtual meeting room per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law C thirty A, section twenty. This meeting will take place virtually over Zoom. I'd like to call the meeting to order pursuant to mass general law C section thirty A, section twenty. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. I would like to ask everybody to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. They're going to be led by our Lee Elementary students, Madison Heath and Gina Carlino.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So happy that we have people here to help us with the pledge again. We missed you guys over the summer. Thanks so much. Okay, our mission statement for the Lee Public Schools is to ensure that students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can you do roll call for me, please?
Mr. Armin. Mr. Kenneth.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscherich.
Here.
Ms. Larmen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Strickler.
Here.
Mrs. Wattsworth.
She's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, next up on our agenda is the approval of our August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Lee School Committee Minute Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the minutes from August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two for Lee School.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kenneth.
Abstain.
Ms. Kuscherich.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Strickler.
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have public input.
Members of the public are invited to adjourn at this time. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or to a subcommittee of the school committee. Each member of the public will be allowed four minutes to speak.
Kathy Hall.
This is all.
Trying to unmute. Here I am. I'm good on this. I'm sorry.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm here to, I wanted to talk about the fitness court,
but that's not going to be until new business. So I'm not even sure if the school committee is aware of what's going to be broached tonight and under new business, but I just want to give you a real quick background. The town has written and received a certain portion of money for this fitness court. The town would have to put in the rest of the money, but the court is going to be something like thirty-eight square feet. Our situation with both, you know, the town and the Lee Youth Commission, which I chair, is where are we going to put this fitness center? We know it can't go in the athletic field because of the flood plain, and also we already have a fitness unit down there. We were thinking of the East Lee Playground, but it's not really used that often. We always have our eye on three hundred Stockbridge Road. And then we said, well, what about some property at the school? And we looked at Maple Street, and I talked with Greg Burgenti, and he said, you know, that's really, we are still working on the putting up the practice field, and beyond that still is all wetlands and, you know, not a, not a good spot. So we met, when I say we, Janet Warner, Chris Britton, Lenny Tisdale and I met to talk about the possibility and to go up to the school and look at the property and see what might be used. And we found the spot where it's beyond the football field. We know that's sacred, so we don't even talk football field. But where they sell the T-shirts and all of that, the possibility of having it in that area and maybe moving that, I'm going to call it a shed, somewhere else. So we looked at that and we said, well, all right, we need to have a meeting. So we met. It was Chris Britton, Greg Burgenti, Jordan Meyer, am I saying his name correctly? And I met, and we said, yeah, this is, it's a great spot. It will fit in there. They were already thinking of moving that, I'm going to call shed, to another location. So tonight, they're going to do a presentation. I don't know if Greg's going to do it or Superintendent Richard's going to do it, but at any rate, we're looking, bless you, we're looking for approval of the use of the property at the school. It would be most beneficial. It's open. It's protected. The, the maintenance would be taken care of. That's not going to be the responsibility of the school committee, as far as I know, if I understand it correctly. And this company will do annual checkups to make sure the equipment is always top-notch. You know, nothing needs to be replaced, and if it does, you know, it will get replaced. So as a member of the Lee Youth Commission and working with the town and the DPW, I'm just here to say that we hope that whenever the presentation is done during new business, excuse me, new business, that the school committee will give us a favorable move forward. Go Wildcats! And later on, if you want, I will sing you that school song.
Oh, we're good, Kathy.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Does anybody have any question or?
Rossat?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Take care.
Anyone else for public comment? Madam Chair.
All right, moving right along, we have our student representative. Welcome back.
Yes.
What have you got for us?
So this month is the start of school, and we do have a couple new systems in place. One is a appointment system to see our adjustment counselors, who are Mr. Quavis and Mr. Bear. I actually set up Mr. Quavis's through the Remind. It's a program where you can basically contact Mr. Quavis to schedule a appointment to see him. A student might do this for having hardships at home or at school. It's a place for them to go to just talk about their feelings openly. And I believe it is on every school Chromebook to set this adjustment system. This was put in place because in previous years, people would skip class to go see adjustment counselors, whereas now they want to make sure that the people who actually need the help, they get it, instead of just a person who wants to skip class. As long as well, we have the Founder's Day Parade, the Lee Middle High School marching band. We're marching on Saturday, this Saturday at ten AM. And as well as on Friday, at the Taste of Lee, the junior class of two thousand and twenty-four will be selling root beer floats. I believe the location, I talked with junior class advisors, would be around Karen Keenan's in that area, but they'll be selling it for a fundraiser. And we also have an anonymous reporting system for bullying incidents implemented. There's posters around the school with QR codes, which any student can report a bullying or harassment anonymously. And there also is a punishment for false claims, which the school can pursue legal actions towards it for false claims.
That is, thank you, Jacob. That's all great stuff. I love that. I love the online system so that kids aren't in classes. And the QR system is amazing as well. Thank you for coming back.
You're welcome.
I'm glad we didn't scare you off. All right. Oh, you came with mom. Then we have to say, huh? Yeah. All right, next up, we have our superintendent's update with Michael Richard.
Thank you very much, Mr. Larmen, and as always, I'll try to be efficient with, with your time and get you through the things that you need to know. A quick enrollment update for us, we've got a total of six hundred and forty-four students in the Lee Public Schools as of September the first. Those numbers have been ebbing and flowing over the last two weeks, a little bit as some families settle in. Some families are moving and some are changing schools, but we're hopeful that we can remain consistent there. We do have a hundred and fifty-seven school choice students making up that six hundred and forty-four, which is a pretty remarkable number. On a side note, I was at the MASSS Executive Committee Institute this past weekend, and my colleagues across the state could not believe how districts like ours survive on school choice. But I think it's a testament to the educational programming and extracurricular opportunities that we afford our students that causes us to have such positive numbers here in Lee. The opening of school, I, I'd like to suggest that Convocation was, as promised, educational, engaging, and entertaining. For those of you who were able to, to join us for that, our areas of focus for the school year, so the community is aware, is around what we call ready. That's race, equity, diversity, and inclusion. It's about building relationships with students, and it's about community. And I know it sounds corny, but there is no community without you, and that was the message that was shared with our faculty and staff back at Convocation. So professional development at both schools, including a lot of compliance training, took place before we welcomed students on the twenty-ninth of August. Speaking of professional development, we've got a full slate of it scheduled for the year. We're, we have regular meetings scheduled with the Anti-Defamation League regarding ready. We're conducting a book study on the book Biased by Jennifer Everhart. We did a screening and discussion of who we are as a volunteer effort by many of our faculty and staff members. We continue to roll out the new math, and we will be forming a pilot group for new ELA materials. Again, you'll recall that we're using S R three monies to purchase both those math and ELA materials. In November, November eighth, we will have a countywide professional development day that we participate in. Very quick, this is literally a touch and go. MCAS preliminary results are in, but they are embargoed. I'm sorry, I can't share, but we expect that on the eleventh of October, we should be able to present some findings about our performance and action steps related thereto. I mentioned the executive committee meeting, three areas of focus that we had at that meeting. One was ready. That dominated the super majority of our time. The second was improving the pipeline to education. We, we noted across the Commonwealth the struggles that we're all facing to find not just classroom teachers, but building administrators and support staff. Everyone is in the same boat. We are truly all in the same boat here across the state. We're struggling to find people who are interested and qualified. And I saw many articles today across the internet about advertisements in other states for, we don't care about your credentials, just apply, and we will put you in a classroom. We don't want to be in that position here in Lee, but as the message that I sent out a couple of weeks ago, if there are interested and qualified members of our community who would like to be a part of our Lee Public School system, please be encouraged to apply. And then the last is a call for legislative action relative to education-related bills. Quick athletics update through last night. Football's undefeated. Volleyball is, it's nice to be able to say that. Volleyball is, is one and one. Soccer suffered another loss last night, so they're oh and two. Cross-country has had one meet, but it's a try meet, I guess, so the girls are three and all, the boys are oh and three. So we're going to call Mr. Bianco to step it up, and then golf is, is, is one and three. And but we're, we're proud of all of our student athletes and the effort that they put behind their teams and proud to wear the orange and black. And that's what I've got for you today. Again, in an effort to be, you know, considerate of your time, but be happy to entertain any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions or Mike? All right. All right, next up, we have our principal and directors' reports. First up, we have Lee Elementary School with Tim Rettner.
First day of school, we welcomed three hundred and twenty-five students through our doors, many who were here last year, but many who were new members of the LES family. On the first day, we also had our kindergarten team hold a family visit day, where students and families visited classrooms, met teachers, and took part in the brunch out in the courtyard. The brunch was sponsored by the PTO, whose help is always appreciated. Clubs at LES will be starting up in the coming weeks. Information, information will be forthcoming in the LES newsletters. The search for a new ELA program, as Superintendent Richard alluded to a minute ago, that spans kindergarten to eighth grade, begins next week. We formed a committee, and we will start meeting next week to go over ELA theory as part of the S R funds. There are four memory benches in our courtyard that are in need of repair and a new coating, and we coordinated with the Industrial Arts Program, LMHS, to do this. They came up yesterday to pick them up, and they're going to have students refurbish these benches. Open house for LES is tomorrow from five-thirty to seven. We hope to see many families there to explore our beautiful school and to see their child's classroom and meet their teachers. Speaking of teacher, we have several new faces in the faculty this year, including Courtney Meisberger in sixth grade, Kelly Bosberg in third and fourth grade, Special Education, Sarah Nichols, Special Education, J T Brown, fourth grade, Cynthia Mead in fourth grade, Samantha Sorrentino in first grade, and Madeline Doust as a sweet language pathologist. Picture day was yesterday. You've not lived if you've not seen a line of kindergartners waiting.
That's true.
It was a very, it was a fun day, and it's always a chaotic day of sorts. Head staff has closed their program here at LES, and we plan to reuse that space for our expressive arts program, and it will occasionally get used as a place for our E E C program, South Berkshire Kids, to hold playgroups for families. School council starts next week. Materials for the playground refurbishment, which I'm sure Jordan Meyer will talk about in a moment, have arrived, and we're waiting for game time to establish an installation schedule. This is the first phase of our playground refurbishment, and it's pretty exciting. Our monthly walk to school starts up next month, October third. Permission slips will be sent home to families in the coming weeks, and the school committee will be receiving a formal invite soon.
We, we all got it. Yes, Lori emailed me the other day, and I forwarded it on to her.
Hope to see you all there.
Yep.
The third or the fifth?
She told me it was the fifth.
Did she just tell me that? Let me just double check. It's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fifth. Yep, you're correct.
I'm going to be there. I reschedule. I rearranged my schedule.
That was fast.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to park the car and get Ken to drop us off.
There you go.
Anybody got questions for Tim? All right, next up, we have Greg Burgenti for Lee Middle and High School.
So we also had a great start to the school year this year, and I just have a few things to highlight for you all. We restarted our advisory program here at LMHS. We haven't had one for, I guess it was actually before my time, so it was quite a while ago. So every other day on Orange Days, all advisory groups will meet for about twenty minutes. The time can be used for various activities, brief assemblies, such as the Peace Day Ceremony next week. They're simply talking together in a small group to try to ensure that every student in the building has at least one adult that they know well enough. Advisers are intended to stay together during the student's time in the building, so that group should be together for example, should be together for all six years, that they're here with the same advisor hopefully as well. It's a great, equal program, and I think it has some great benefits as we move forward. Tomorrow at our faculty meeting, we'll have the first day of professional development from the ADL's Anti-Defamation League's World of Difference Equity Inclusion Series. And LES had that yesterday as well.
September one.
September one, so we're moving forward with that, and we'll be doing that throughout the year this year. As Jacob mentioned, we're pulling, putting in place streamlined processes for students to access support, such as school adjustment counselors, to minimize time out of classes, yet still allow them to request a meeting time. And as Jacob also mentioned, we've implemented an anonymous reporting system through the new website or through a phone app. It can happen either way, that allows student, staff, or parents to submit reports to the administration anonymously, not just for bullying, but for any other concerns that they may have. You know, and it was the one in the, in the class meetings of, you know, if you are just concerned about a friend and you don't want to be known as the person, you know, who has that concern, so you reported that concern. Our two areas of focus for the school this year, we'll be working to rebuild and enhance our sense of community as we move forward on the depths of the pandemic. It was a rough couple of years, and some of that sense of community, I think, naturally during that time kind of went downhill a little bit, and we're, we're working to get back to that place where we were and even beyond that. We see this in the advisory program and our equity inclusion work, in our continued support of everyone's mental health. The second goal for the year is working to achieve a climate where excellence is expected of everyone every day, while still providing that atmosphere of respect, compassion, and support that is called for in our school's vision state. So we can have high expectations, and everybody can follow through on those on behalf of proper, legitimate support. As Mr. Richard mentioned, our athletic teams are in full swing right now. The Shakespeare Program will be starting up in the next couple of weeks, and their goal is an in-house performance on Veterans Day weekend. Other clubs and organizations are having their startup meetings, and for example, the Social Justice Club is sponsoring the Rise Together Walk to Benefit, Benefit the Elizabeth Freeman Center this Thursday night before open house. The LMHS Open House is this Thursday from six to seven-thirty. Parents and guardians are encouraged and invited to stop in at any point during those hours to visit your students, teachers. It's a very informal night here where you can just walk around and meet your teachers at your leisure. We will be here to print out schedules if you need them, but there's no actual scheduled times. Our first progress reports of the year will be issued on September thirtieth, and the annual flu shot clinic will be held on October sixth, and information about that will be coming from the nurse's office shortly. That's all I have.
That was a lot. Any questions for Greg? All right, thanks so much, Greg. Next up, Jen Norton, Special Education.
Hi. So we are still actively interviewing and hiring some paraprofessional staff. We have onboarded two additional paraprofessionals that will be starting in the next week, two weeks, depending on their schedules. So we are still looking for three. So if you know anybody, we do have people. I just received another resume today, so we're actively doing that. I do want to say that our preschools are full for the moment, but we do have a waiting list, and we are still actively screening if anybody is in the area with any three or four-year even if we cannot get you into the preschool program this year. If there's any concerns, we'll like screen, and that way if we need to do a full evaluation, we're happy to do that. So people can contact my office directly at the elementary school, and Kristen or I can help them through that process. And we are still actively working, Superintendent Richard and TMS and myself, in special education grants, and that's where we are for right now.
All right, any questions for Jen? All right, Jordan Meyer with Facilities.
Good evening, that was everyone. I don't have too much to report either, other than just the standard basics of the facilities, which are still as healthy as they were during the pandemic, if not more so. We are also working on the playground, like Tim said, those components did arrive today. We have communication depth with the installers. We're just waiting for data of that. Also, in conjunction with that is, we will get some concrete work that needs to be done up there for safety purposes, to a degree, because it gets a little muddy, a little ponding of water at times. So we're working towards all of that. The football field down here had a drainage problem, or what we thought was a drainage problem. Excuse me, upon looking into it, LB discovered that there was a drainage ditch and basin there. It was just covered to be protected during the construction phase, and it was just subsequently buried, lost. So it was recovered. It was cleaned out, saved us a ton of money. We shouldn't have that problem anymore. Some other things going around, the SINTAS conversion for the district is still ongoing. There's just a few punch lists of spots that need to be done, but for the most part, it's converted. It's a state contract. It should serve some use as well. We're working with the sped department on some of these that they have all around, from appliances and telecommunications needs and offices and such. The lights out front, we have five of them that are out. They're just ballaces. We're waiting on the materials. It's going to be in a couple of weeks. We were provided all of our occupancy certificates, obviously. The salt caster for the secondary truck is still being held for us. We're trying to figure out if we can afford that or not, weighing the need for it because of the other truck that is, you know, due to fail in the day. The van has finally been returned to us in full, is complete, it is paid for. Don't have to look at that anymore. There's fuel cards being provided to all of the vehicles that currently consume diesel or gasoline. That program will allow us to run forward and manage our fleet a little bit better. And as Ms. Hall said, that shed that's out on the field has already been moved, just so you know that for your discussion purposes, that's a non-issue.
Perfect.
That's all we have, and we're fully staffed.
Yay! That's a big one, right?
Yeah.
Any questions for Jordan? All right, thanks, guys. All right, next up on our agenda is committee reports. First up is the subcommittee with Randy. Could you make it back?
He is back.
I did, I did make it back. I've, I've had Spectrum here today, and the problem is not with my router, it's outside underneath the ground somewhere. So they'll be there tomorrow to fix it, so I apologize.
No worries. We have the same problem at our house, Randy.
Yeah, so the, the first order of business here is our first warrant, the accounts payable. As you can see on the screen, for those of you who can see it virtually, it is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and seven cents. And the description on the side tells you where the, the largest amount was going to, and as you can see, EverSource, Do4, and Hillcrest represent the, the larger number of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So that is the accounts payable that was accepted at the Subfinance Committee earlier today.
Okay, I will accept a motion for the accounts payable.
I make a motion for accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and seven cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Did you get that, friend? Did you get who? Yeah. Any?
Yeah, just for the community's clarification purposes, Mr. Kenneth, I appreciate those descriptions. I just want to make sure the community knows that between Hillcrest, EverSource, and Do4, those bills do not total a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. They're just the top three bills that are, that make up that one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. I just want to make sure that there's not confusion in the community about that, but this is, is just a, a, a larger group of bills because we transitioned over to TMS.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call for us?
Mr. Kenneth.
Yes.
Ms. Kuscherich.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Strickler.
Yes.
Yep, and the next item on the warrants was the payroll in the total amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty cents, and this is all aligned with the budget. So just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for the payroll.
I'll make a motion to accept the payroll, the total of three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda can do a roll call?
Mr. Kenneth.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscherich.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Abstain.
And Ms. Strickler.
Abstain. Okay, moving on to our next. Moving on to our next item on the agenda is old business and we actually don't have any, which is great news. Um, so our next thing is new business and the first thing on our agenda is contracts approval. And we have our cafeteria workers' contracts.
Right, so you have, uh, you, you had a copy of the updated, uh, cafeteria employees', uh, contract. Uh, really only two, um, items, uh, that need your attention. One is obviously a salary. We adjusted, um, the salary for the ki- uh, kitchen supervisors to start at nineteen dollars an hour, uh, and for the cafeteria helpers to start at fifteen dollars an hour to reflect, um, minimum wage. Uh, the cafeteria staff, as well as, uh, Shannon Gagliardo, who is our new food service director, were all in support, uh, of those proposed, uh, updates to their contract. They were a fantastic bunch to work with.
Does anybody have any?
Oh, I'm sorry, the second was longevity and longevity was increased by, uh, twenty-five dollars per, uh, per section.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
Am I just, uh, in, in reference to the budget, how does that, how does that play out?
Yeah, this all comes out of food service revolving, so this doesn't touch the foundation budget at all. The town of Lee is not responsible for this.
Perfect, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the cafeteria worker's contract as written.
I move to accept the cafeteria's cafeteria worker's contract as written.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscher.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Strickler.
Yes. All right. Next thing on our agenda is a field trip request. Who's going to talk us through that? Go ahead, Greg.
Thanks. So this, um, for those of you that, who have been around for a while, this, uh, traditionally has come up every other year, where the Tin Van goes on an overnight trip for a clinic and this is cultural experiences as well. Um, obviously, two years ago, it didn't happen.
Right.
Um, but interestingly enough, and I think this is, this is good news, um, Ms. Nelson, uh, worked with the same travel organizations and they had honored the deposits that were put down during the pandemic. And so that's, um, those don't need to be placed again, so that's a huge plus. Um, it's really a great, uh, weekend trip. It's a one night overnight trip. Um, if you read, read through the descriptions you put together, it's a great experience for all of the high school band members to have.
I can tell you that both of my children went on it and it was amazing. Does anybody have any questions for Greg about the field trip? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the field trip request to you soon.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, go to Randy. We need something for spreading the love today.
All right, Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Kuscher.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Strickler.
Yes. All right. And then the next thing on our agenda is the fitness court.
So you also have, uh,
Greg, Greg does it again.
You also have a, uh, brief, uh, memo from me about this. Um, this is all talked quite a bit about at the beginning, so you know the background. Um, the idea is that this thirty-eight by thirty-eight fitness court would go north of the football field, kind of to the side of, uh, the greenhouse. Um, it would still leave plenty of space between the end of the football field and the beginning of, um, the court. Um, and we won't have to even take down the tree that's over there, which was, um, a great thing. Um, I keep cutting down trees. Um, so it would fit nicely in that area and would really complement, um, our phys ed program. Um, we'd have basically first right of use, so it's on our property and during the school day, it'd be kind of reserved for us. Much like the tennis courts, it could be opened up, um, in the public and use it, um, outside of the school day. Um, I think there are many, many positives to this, um, and there's no cost attached, um, which is another plus. And, um, as Mrs. Hall said, the town has, um, covered, they've arranged to cover every ongoing maintenance needs of the fitness court as well. Um, there's a huge number of exercises that can be done on this court. Um, some of them are kind of briefly explained in one of the attachments that I gave you. Um, but there's a whole mixture of things you can go from spot to spot and do different sorts of exercises all over the place, so. It would be, I think, a huge benefit to our P D program, like I said, for our kids. It is intended for middle school and up, it is not something that is sized for elementary use. Um, but, um, I definitely would encourage the committee to support having this on campus.
Questions for Greg? Five.
Two questions, one, winter maintenance. Just sort of if you can talk about that. And then two, is there anything we need to think about for liability reasons?
Um, one, it would basically go offline and snowball. There's just no way to keep it clean, so it would go offline at that point exactly. Um, so that's really not, um, I don't think a huge concern. Um, liability coverage, I mean, our, our, I can only speak during the school day, we're covered by our liability insurance. Um, I don't know if Mr. Richard.
I'd say, yeah, I think that, uh, if, if something happened afterwards, there'd be probably a, a discussion between the, the injured and the town's insurance, uh, about, uh, where the liability, uh, for that falls. There is an assumption of risk if you, um, if you take advantage of, of an open area. Uh, and so it may, it may be worth noting though, that we could put some signage up that, that says, uh, use, uh, use this facility at your own risk, assume your own risk. Uh, I, I'll, I'll work with the town, uh, to make sure that we're protected properly.
It would be no different than if they came up to use the playground. I would assume. Like if you use the playground up at the elementary school and you get hurt, that's not our fault, that's your fault, yeah.
And we do have signage for the sledding down the hill.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah, we do. Yeah, we do.
I just think it's good to talk about it.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah. Other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve the, uh, installation of the, uh, fitness court, uh, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call for us?
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscher.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler.
Yes. And we have one other, uh, item of business that isn't on the agenda, but, um, uh, Betsy and Kirk would like to share some information with our public.
Sure. Just a quick note that Kirk and I have been selected, appointed something to the Lee Master Plan Commit, Committee. So we would, well, I can't speak for you, but in general, the committee really encourages support, um, input, guidance, thoughts on the future of Lee. And we're coming at this from a school committee perspective, but obviously as residents within the community and just looking for as much, um, as much input as possible, especially within just diverse communities and people and young and old and everything else, so.
The best way to support our schools, I think, is also advocate for schools at the town level as well, so.
Okay. And how, like, when would you like this?
So do we have a cutoff date? No. We will be meeting once a month. Uh, I'm not sure specific meeting dates have been put together yet, but we will be meeting once a month. It will be a public meeting, um, but you can reach me and, and Kirk through our school committee email address.
So it's like an ongoing process?
Yes, at least a year.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you too, that's great.
All right. Um, and, uh, our next meeting, future bu- business, our next meeting will be on October eleventh. Um, and our last item on our agenda is adjournment.
Motion to.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I got one thing, sorry. Um, for our, our next meeting, if, if possible, to kind of get an update on the, um, vaccination policy, how it's been implemented, how it's working. Um, and also, is it, is it time to revisit and revamp it? So if we could add that to the agenda next month, that'd be great.
I agree, Randy.
Yep. You'll move that from the meeting notes to the agenda, right, Brenda? You are my rock star. I don't know what I'd do without Brenda. Um, okay, any other discussion? All right, roll call is out.
Uh, Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Kuscher.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
And Ms. Strickler.
Yes. We are adjourned at seven forty-one.